Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meeting, Zach, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of those options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing is required to attend the meeting. Refer to the agenda packet on the city website on how to reserve a seat and/or submit comments. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. First item is the Fledge of Allegiance and Silent Meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. All righty. The first item on the agenda is a presentation. It's the Mayor's Award for February 2020. Do you like to come forward, ladies, from the Workforce Partnership? I'm going to give you this, but I had her make it large so I could read it better. The City of Leavenworth Workforce Partnership has presented the Mayor's Award for Community Service. For exceptional dedication to the Leavenworth community, Workforce Partnership is a community partner for the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, Kansas Eviction Prevention Program. The invaluable program serves residents throughout the pandemic. Many who needed this program lacked equipment or skills necessary to print, scan, and upload documents for the online application. The Workforce Development Center offered resources as well as personal assistance from staff to ensure applications were submitted properly. Workforce Partnership had one of the highest number of applications with one of the lowest application rejection rates of all partners in Kansas. This has been such a tough time, and anyway, let me present you with this.
Thank you.
Mayor's Award tonight. Would you guys like to say anything?
I'd be happy to.
Shonda was being very shy. She told me I had to be here to say a few words. Thank you very much. My name is Keely Schneider. I'm the Executive Director for Workforce Partnership. And Shonda is our site manager, and so really, kudos to her. I am just, I was so delighted when she told me about our involvement in this program because we like to say yes. And when we talk about leveraging resources in our community, this is exactly what we're talking about. You know, we have the ability in our workforce center to allow people to be on computers, to scan documents. We actually even have fax machines, if you can believe that. So, you know, we have a lot of capability there. So if individuals don't have that ability at home or at their, you know, at a place of work, we can provide that. And to come together and allow people to come to our center and fill out the paperwork necessary so that they could be approved of the program was, I feel like, you know, the least we could do. So, so happy to have partnered and to do this and so, so glad that we, we were one of the lowest rejection rates. I love that. I did not know that. That's fantastic. So thank you again, and we, we will continue to be this resource. And I, I know Shonda mentioned that a lot of people stayed after they filled out their paperwork to look for work, to get a Kansas Works account, to work with our staff. So that's the value of coming together this way. So again, thank you all. This is wonderful. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but don't feel like you have to. Next item is the Parks and Recreation Department Park Adoption Presentation.
This will be our Director, Steve Grant.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Paul. Madam Mayor, Commissioner, good to be here with you this evening. I'm always excited to talk about volunteers and adoptive parks. As you know, the Parks and Recreation Department has Adopt a Park Program, which we encourage residents, community organizations, and businesses to become directly involved in improving, improving our city, the city parks, and other landscape and green spaces. Tonight, we are recognizing four new adoptions at our parks tonight. So with that, I'll go through the adoptions. First, South Side Park, which is over off of First and Vilas in that area. There's a group who has formed, they call themselves the Families of Billy Goat Hill, and they are adopting South Side Park. It's several families that grew up in the area, they're with their parents, and now the kids live there, and they've gotten together, formed this group, contacted us, and they've adopted South Side Park. So that is fantastic. They were unable to be here tonight. Two of their representatives, Shannon Gardner and Tracy Harold, are representing two of those families. And I think there's, I think there's like four or five of the families, so. So we're really pleased with that. The second adoption is Cody Park, and it is adopted by GLJ Accounting LLC. And Ms. Jerry Jenkins is here this evening in person for this acknowledgement. And she visits Cody Park a lot and, and has really vested interest in it. So we're really, really pleased with, with that adoption. Third one is Union Park, and it is being adopted by the Women's Division, Leavenworth Lansing Chamber of Commerce. Our adoption contact for that is Ms. Jennifer Brennaman Toby. She was unable to be here with us this evening, so we're excited about that. And fourth, finally, is Stubby Park, and it is being adopted by Boy Scout Troop 176. Troop Leader Dave Davis is the contact person of that, and I believe Dave is on the, the go-to this evening, joining us. So in 2020, the, one of the commission goals during the goal-setting session was to re, focus on community improvement, and that goal was to review the status of the Adopt a Park Program, identify the level of the activity of all the groups interested, invested in it, and then to pursue more groups, community service organizations, churches, other groups, working towards the goal of have, getting all of our parks and all of our green spaces adopted. So with that goal in mind, staff reached out to all of the entities and groups last fall that had adopted parks and areas. At the time, there were 15, and after all those correspondences, some people had moved away, some people had moved on. We ended up with 10 that indicated that they wanted to continue on with their adoption and stay active with it. So after those correspondences, we went ahead and we started blasting out, putting everything on social media, trying to get the word out for adopting all the parks. We put it, put it out on our Facebook page, we put it on the sign over at Stubby Park where people see it driving by. And probably the biggest thing we've done is we've created a webpage on the city website where, where anyone in the community, any groups, churches, whomever, can go on our city website and go to the Parks and Rec page, click on Adopt a Park. It gives all the information. It tells all the parks, all the green spaces available for adoption, and there's also an application where they can apply right there online. So, so with that, and, and trying to get, really reboot the system and get going, these, these four new adoptions over the last few months are kind of a result of that, and, and we, we're going to continue putting it out there, you know, with, with recognition meetings like this. Hopefully, there's, there's some churches or groups are out there seeing this that say, hey, let's go on and see if there's a place that we frequent, or, or maybe our church is near a park or a green space, or something like that. What we, I know you've seen them before. We put up the signs at the park that, that will say adopted by, so they get a little bit of publicity there. There's also a little bit of publicity on our website. If you go to, say, Rent a Shelter Cody Park, you pull up the Cody Park, and it'll say right there, adopted by Troop 176. Or if you click on Havens Park, it'll say right up there, adopted by Leavenworth Lions Club. So, so with that, please, please help me acknowledge and, and thank our new four adoptions for the new parks, and, and I'll open it up with any conversation or any questions or anything else I may be able to answer.
Can we offer a round of applause?
Yeah, let's give it. So is, as far as the website goes, is there somewhere that they can, I guess, on Facebook, I guess, can they go to post pictures and things of, of the, of what they're doing in the parks, or, you know?
Probably, yeah, I would say on, on Facebook.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Are there still several parks that have not been adopted?
There is, there is. So this brings us up to 14, and we have probably, I think it's eight or nine available parks. And then we also have a lot of green spaces. You think of the Arbor Way, 20th Street Trafficway, you know, the whole trail along there. A lot of different green spaces. Just about 18 or 19 spaces, I think, still identified on the website.
Good. We'll try to share that information. That's great.
Mr. Grant.
Sure.
Union Park, I know where it is, but I think a lot of people may not know where it is. Can you kind of define where that small pocket park is?
Right, it's a little triangle at the corner, intersection of Seventh and Lemon.
Spruce.
Spruce. Seventh and Spruce, right. And it's just a little triangle there. It's got a fountain there in the middle of it and some brick, brick sidewalks around it. So it's a, it's just a, it's a nice little, it's got some benches, little place, little sitting area right in the middle of it.
All right. I think people drive by it all quite, there's quite a bit of traffic there, but I imagine if you'd ask everybody where Union Park is, a huge percentage would say, I don't know.
Yeah.
But thanks for identifying it.
Right. And it's, you know, we, people use it, you know? It's got, that's, that's our only fountain that, that runs during the year. It's kind of nice to sit there.
Little park.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions or anything? No, well, thank you, sir.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, for coming tonight, representing the Boy Scouts. I don't know if you hear me. You're muted, anyway. Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for coming and representing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from the February 9 regular meeting. Are there any edits or, or issues with that? No? No questions, concerns? Okay. I would take a motion then, please.
I move to approve minutes from February 9, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting with Commissioner Friswell.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. Five to, five to zero. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Carla, are there any?
We have no emails that were received, but we do have two members in the audience that have come for a public comment.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Who would like to go first? If up to the podium, please. Hi, Kelly.
Hi. How are you guys tonight? Good. Good. For those who don't know me, my name is Kelly Meyer. I'm the Executive Director for the CASA Program. We are located at 101, 02, 106, and 108 South Fitz Street, right across the street. So I asked to address the commission tonight because I would like for you to review the, I would actually like for you to review and consider revision of the temporary sign code that is Section 812. And so I, I would also like consideration, given we currently have a sign that has been placed, and we are, we are beyond the limit of our code or of our permit, and I would like to request an extension that we be permitted the ability to maintain that sign until review is complete and possible revisions are made to the code. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I ask for stuff all the time and get told no, so I'm not going to stop now. So specifically, what I would like to request is that there be consideration and review given to Section 4, which limits per signs to 60 days, Section 6, which indicates that no parcel display, a temporary sign longer than 120 days in a calendar year, Section 7, that says no par, I'm paraphrasing when I say what these things say also, that no parcel will have more than one sign at any given time. And I, I, my personal opinion is that I think our codes are keeping honest people honest. I'm an honest person who follows the rules. We requested a sign permit. We were able to get a sign permit. We paid our fee, and we did what we were supposed to do. And, and I think that's great, and we follow the rules. However, what I'm seeing is that across the board, that doesn't seem to be what everybody in town is doing. So what I would really like to do is to review it so that it meets the needs of the community or not, not make people who are following the rules have expectations that people who aren't following the rules have to have. And so, okay, let's see. We have...
So this is a temporary sign you're talking about?
It is a temporary sign, correct.
Where is it located?
Where is ours located? It's, so on the, if you go outside.
On your building?
On your building. It's, yeah, it's towards the, towards the middle of the building on this side. You can't miss it if you look at our building.
Right. But it's a temporary sign, not a permanent sign?
It is a temporary sign, correct.
Okay.
So what, in addition to all the things that I had mentioned, I would like to suggest that there be consideration given, that there not be a limit on the number of days that a temporary sign can be hung on a, on a building, that we allow businesses to change that temporary sign if those, they so choose, to give explanation for that. The sign that we currently have on our building, we recruit volunteers that advocate for children that are abused and neglected. So our sign says volunteer, I'm paraphrasing this also, it says something like volunteers wanted. It has our logo and our phone number and our website. It helps us to recruit volunteers. We would like to be able to change that out every so often with a different type of sign that has a same, similar message, but not the same, maybe different colors, but still our logo, says what we need it to say, but gets attention when people see it every day and they're like, oh, I already know what that is, so that we can garner more support for our mission and serve more kids. The way that the code is written now, we're not able to do that. Once you request the permit and the sign goes up, you can only have that particular sign for that duration. So we would like for the review to be given so that if somebody wants to change out the sign, you're able to change out the sign, which is what would be most beneficial to an organization like ours.
Mr. Kramer, is this a...
Yeah, temporary signs are, are always looked at a little bit differently. Again, there are groups that take care of them. Right, but it's still a temporary sign.
Okay.
You know, so there's rules about how signs have to look and how they are, so then that's why we restrict temporary in nature signs, because they can become a nuisance if not taken care of. As we saw across the street when that building was for sale and the sign was flopping all the time, there's always issues with temporary signs because they're not permanently affixed to a structure.
Okay.
Another thing that we would like to ask that you take into consideration is that there be a reduction or a waived fee for a nonprofit organization. The current fee structure, I know for a nonprofit could be cost prohibitive. I know for a small business, especially in the middle of a pandemic, could be cost prohibitive. And I think that you may have more people that would complete a permit application and submit that if it wasn't cost prohibitive. And also consideration for the number of signs that can be on display at one time. And so although I do know of many signs that are in town, the only one I really feel comfortable talking about is businesses that's closed because I don't want to hear anybody's dirty laundry. But an example of this that I feel like would be very appropriate is currently in front of Cushing Hospital. There are three signs. The code says you can have one. I totally understand why there are three there. It is definitely a matter, matter of public health, public safety. But again, I don't understand why it's okay for them to have three and other businesses not. That, that just doesn't make sense, and that's not fair. So I would like consideration given to that, or at least review given to that also. So just anecdotal information, because I am that person, I spent 30 days, it was a great, beautiful day. So it was, it was a wonderful day for me to take a ride. So I took 30 minutes this afternoon, and I went for a drive around town. I got a coffee, went, went, went looking around, and in addition to our sign on our building, there's 26 signs that I found randomly throughout Leavenworth. 15 of them, I regularly recall seeing them for at least the last six months. They are temporary signs. I know they have been there longer than six months, therefore, I know that they are outside of the window should they have gotten a permit before they got them. Four of them, there's more than one sign at the property. Now, one of those, one of those four was Cushing Hospital. So three, in addition to that, are businesses that have more than one sign, which I know then the code is not being enforced for them. One of them was in poor repair out of 26. One of them was somewhat obstructing a public sidewalk. So the percentage that weren't following the rules, should the rules be enforced, was, I figured, to be significantly smaller than what one might assume you would find if people aren't following the rules. So bottom line is, I think 26 signs in 30 minutes, like, that's almost a minute a sign that I found. I think that clearly demonstrates that there is definitely a need for people to use signage, temporary signs, to communicate the message of their business or what they're doing, what they're selling to the community, to the public. I feel like if that's what we're doing, us included as a nonprofit, that as a whole, the city should support that. We want strong business, and that's how people are selling their goods or services. So we want to do that. So I feel like that supports what I'm asking for, and that's why I would like for you to very much take that into consideration. I will also add, then in the 12 weeks that we have had our sign up, four of our volunteer inquiries, when asked how they heard about us, mentioned our sign. Four, in 12 weeks. With the pandemic in 2020, we certified eight new volunteers.
That's great.
Oh, that's great.
So half of what we certified in the entire last year is the number of people who in 12 weeks have noticed our business because of that sign. So thank you again for your time. I appreciate giving me the opportunity to stand on my soapbox. If you guys have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
I, I don't, you know, I need to look at the codes because I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot there. We can certainly look at the temporary sign codes. I would, I would really caution anybody who brings an item to the commission when you go around looking. There are many businesses that have gone through the variance process, so they may have two, three, or four signs, but they've gone through the variance process, they've gone to the Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals. There are temporary signs out there that are in the code enforcement process. We write up at least 10 a month for violations. Those have due process through the court system. So going through the town, figuring sign, you know, businesses that have two or three signs, they may have gone through the variance process five years ago. We don't know through the correct process. So that is part of it. As far as the temporary sign code, I'm happy to bring it back to the commission, and we can go through it. There's certainly something we can do or look at, but we can bring it back to the commission.
Part of that was to, at least to consider maybe a, a change or a reduction in the fee for nonprofits. Was that one of your points, Ms. Meyer?
It was, yes.
All right. Madam Mayor, I think that we should ask staff to report back to us. That's Ms. Hurley's area, and we look, we can look at it, we can look at all those things, and we can't make a decision here.
Yep.
If you want to write, write to us, any of us, and just put your points, your points down, that, that would help. Of course, we can look back at the future, too. Appreciate you coming.
Unless you've got copies with you now.
But as the city manager pointed out, you know, what you see may, is not just as simple as what you see. I mean, there's, there's a variance process people go through, and many businesses have done so.
But I do applaud your, your powerful observation. I really do.
Thank you.
I know you're a very busy professional person, but maybe if you have a little time, you could moonlight as a code enforcement person.
Oh, yeah.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan. Any, any other comments or suggestions?
Yeah, I did, yeah, thanks, Kelly, for being here. And I did reach out to Mrs. Hurley, and I know she was going to discuss with the Planning Commission, and they're in the process of going through some of the development regulations to maybe update them.
And it does go through them before it comes to you.
Right. So, but, yeah, I wanted to voice what you had to say, because we had a discussion, so I appreciate you being here.
Yeah. So for the request to extend the sign that we have up, is that something that we can do, or is that something that we need to...
Not in this venue, you can't. I mean, you have to go through the...
Through the Planning Commission.
Not the Planning Commission, but Planning and Zone, uh, Ms. Hurley's group.
Yeah, that's through a variance process. The commission doesn't have the authority at the moment to do that.
There's a process, Ms. Hurley's group can, would that be the proper place for her to refer to community development?
We'll reach out. I'll reach out tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you, too.
Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Lay, L-A-Y. I live at 907 Columbia here in Leavenworth. I know that you have on your agenda tonight about the waterways. Well, I have a few questions and concerns. We, okay, so we're looking at, on your last meeting, you had something about the ballfields out there on 20th, I mean, on 10th, out there where the new junior high is, and there, it says something about 50% picking up, the city picking up 50% of that riprock that they wanted to put down because the war shot right by the football fields and the baseball fields. Okay, so my question is, is why do we keep building stuff before we survey? Because that creek's been there since day of time. We have two main waterways that come through Leavenworth. It's Three Mile and Five Mile Creek, right? Unless I got the, so, and I took a drive, I've been driving for the last month, looking at the different waterways, the different fingers that empty off into it. And we're looking at out there, you got LaCompton Hill coming in, you got Michael's Road, you got Tudor that you just, as the crow fly, is less than a quarter of a mile from where they want to build this other. I would like to see them slow it down, put dams with, you know, on that 14th Street just west, that creek run right through there. It's a wooded area, it's deep. You know, why couldn't you put a spill well with water where it raises up so it'll slow it down? Because the more riprock you put down on these bends and everything, once it crosses over 10th, it's going to speed up right through Cody Park. And if you ever know where Number Two Fire Station is, if you ever, because I used to walk that creek back when I was in grade school and stuff like that, and it will rise up to the top of the bank. So instead of just putting riprock down and stuff like that, you know, why can't they go down, put a spill well in, slow it down, and make walkways or fishing ponds or something like that? Yes, then people are going to say, well, what about the kids drowning? Well, 27 miles up the road, they have 32 dams for flood control that's been there since the 50s. We haven't done anything. We get downtown, we have businesses sitting downtown that won't sell because it's in the flood plain. We haven't done anything. Knights of Columbus Field is for sale. You could put something out there, you know, you got Havens dumping in there, you got everything coming off of Federal Hill coming in to town. It, and the more houses we build, yeah, you can front them, and the backyards have all this in there, but it's going to flood. It's not going to do us any good because it's still going to come down into the city. The other day, I was at 741 Potawatomi, and that's when we had an inch and a half of rain. This gentleman, he's got two dogs that he has to put in the house when it rains because two years ago, three years ago, they went through with a track hole, they dug it out, put a manhole in there. But who surveyed it and, and camered it to make sure it's going to flow all the way down to the Three Mile Creek? Instead of him getting, every time it gets raining, he's getting a foot of water, maybe two foot of water. Now he's going to have to put a, a new heater in his house. He can't let his dogs out when it's raining because it, it flood out. We, we keep moving south, but we haven't done anything north. And that's my concern, you know? We working from the outside in instead of inside out. I live off of Spruce, and as Mr. McDonald said, his orange fence surveys, there's been an orange fence up for 15 years, right between Columbia and Broadway on the north side. And if you look on the fence line across, there's a big, deep hole right there. Alls they did was just let it grow up. It hasn't been, it hasn't been, it hasn't been taken care of, but yet we came up, the commission came up with their surveys, you know, for the taxpayers to pay on this stormwater relief and everything. And I don't see, I can see where they're doing it over on 4th Street. The Chestnut one, I thought that was a big emergency, and they're just now getting started on it. Why are we, I mean, because I guess they're working from right there where the 4th Street and working back towards the Justice Center. I mean...
Working all over town right now. I appreciate your comments. I don't know what to say to them because we're, we are doing major projects all over town to try to get this under control.
And actually, Mr. Lay, you are, you are right. The, the CASA with the school district is not riprap. It's to study that streambank, because we're doing, actually what you suggested, we're, we're doing a lot of grade control structures to let the water pond and release. So there is no riprap going in Five Mile Creek by the field.
Well, I thought the, the three circles that they had was against them banks.
Yeah, it's just a study.
Because it was washing out towards the field.
Yeah, but, but we're doing actually that. We're looking at getting rid of making the water go faster, pooling the water, ponding the water, detaining the water, controlling the speed of the water. That's a lot of the work we've been doing, especially out there at the ballfield. We're not putting riprap in right now. That, that was a study that we have funded with the school district, not a project.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm, that's why...
Yeah, you're right. You're on the right track with how you take care of water. You don't speed it up, you slow it down. You are correct.
All right. Uh, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Lay, your comment about the 700 block of Potawatomi, that's one that we discussed last night, or last week.
That's our next, that's our next project.
Yeah, because see, I've seen, because
We recognize that that is a major problem, and that is the effect.
Two or three years ago, two or three years ago, they had track holes and everything up there, and they were, they worked out there. They worked up there. But, you know, when I go there and I hear water running, I'm thinking, wow.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's on project. As, you know, as identified two, three years ago, there's 80 or 90 million dollars worth of stormwater work that needs to be done in, uh, town, and we've, you know, assessed $7 a month or $84 a year per residence. And quite frankly, it's probably gonna be an odd infinitum, because we raised 1.3 million dollars a year against a $90 million project. You do the math on that, long after our grandkids are gone, it's still, it's an ongoing project.
Right, and, and I can understand that, because see, now, if you go back to the, to the north, where Kickapoo, between Kickapoo and Ka'awa, and, uh, Kickapoo and, uh, Potawatomi, there used to be, uh, what we call the hollers. And they, what they did, they backfilled them all and put houses there. The houses from the post.
Yeah.
And, and remodeled them, right? So, did they put concrete, or did they put tin whistles, or what in there? I mean, and that's another thing I've seen. If we're trying to prevent what's happening with the deterioration system now, why are we putting tin back in instead of, you know, letting the taxpayers pay that extra money and don't have to do it with the concrete?
And that's what we're doing. We, we're taking out corrugated metal pipe, which is rusting all over town, and going back with concrete.
Because see, that's why I call tin whistles.
Yeah.
You're, you're on the right track.
Yeah, they fell, they fell in. I mean, just literally fell in all over town, so that's what we're having to deal with now.
And, and you know, because you know, as a kid, you know, I used to cry dad in the creeks and, and get mentos, go fishing and everything, and it's, uh, we, uh, we look at, uh, our citizens, and we, we think that, uh, yeah, we, we pay our taxes, yes, and we expect a little bit more. But sometimes we feel we don't, we don't get it.
I would invite Mr. Lay to come in and meet with me, talk about stormwater.
Yes.
It sounds like it's pretty knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of projects that have gone all over town. They use that 1.3 million.
There's so much potential, potential here, but we're letting it get away. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so much potential here that we let it get, I can go on all night about different things, different structures and stuff that we have.
I, I, I think you, if you would come in and meet with Mr. Kramer, that would be, that would be great.
Just shoot me, uh, Ms. Williamson, you still have my email? Shoot me an email, and I, you know, we, 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 we'll hook up.
Sounds good.
I mean, because, you know, I'd rather see the town bloom than gloom.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's all of our purpose. And I think that we're all doing that, and, you know, everyone probably has a little bit different idea on how to do that. But on, for example, the stormwater projects, they kind of rank order them on, you know, what is the major problem, the biggest major problem that we can address? There are, we know there are hundreds of them. And you can pick out 20 of them, someone else can too, but they have engineers look at all of them, say, you know, these are ones you need to get to right away, or that $500,000 job can be a $2 million job if you don't correct it immediately.
Right.
Unfortunately, we can't do them all. So, they are rank ordered, and, uh, there is a, a very good process that goes through. The professional engineers look at them, not just our, our staff here, but professional engineers are looking at all these projects.
Professional engineer, but you know, uh, I've done dirt work and some other stuff, you know, throughout my years. And that's just like with, uh, the old Herkins Building or Tom Parish Building, as we remodeled Cadillac Place, right? There's several people who love to buy that place, but it's in a flood zone, and you can't, I mean, they don't want to pay that insurance and stuff.
Yes, sir.
I mean, and, and, and as soon as we can slow it down and get it right, you know, that's why we have to close down the walkway every time we get an inch of rain, because it comes up and it floods out.
Yeah, the creek does rise there, but to your point that, uh, the buildings downtown can't be sold because of the flood plain, that, that's not really quite a true statement. The last big flood we had there was probably 15, 18 years ago. And downtown did flood, especially Cherokee. Since that time, that Three Mile Creek has been channeled many times. That, uh, to take care of that problem. That was, remember about 15, 18 years ago?
Right, right.
And lost everything on Cherokee, all the way up to, all the way up to KFC Park at Knights of Columbus Park at 10th and Shawnee, that is.
And they had to evacuate the residents and all that.
Been alleviated, that, that is an issue. Now, 10th, that, uh, Knights of Columbus Park at 10th and Shawnee is in a federal flood zone. I guess you bring it out. Somebody brings in a million yards of dirt and raises it up 10 or 12 feet.
Or build a concrete retaining wall like Bendix Plant did.
I'm sorry?
Or build a, a concrete wall like the Bendix Plant in Kansas City did, that, where they can close the flood gates to keep the water out.
If somebody wants to buy and do that.
There, there, there are a lot of options, you know, and another option is keeping it clean. I, I, as I was driving, I see mattresses laying, I see brush laying.
That's a problem.
Uh, yeah, and that is part of the problem.
Those are code issues that are getting, that, you know, people, the owners get cited for, and I know it's terrible. Drive down 20th Street, people throw their bags out the window.
We could talk about a lot of issues that we have in this whole town. I knew I grew, I grew up in North Leavenworth and played in the creeks up there, and they had the big concrete, 100-year-old concrete, um, culverts that we played in, but anyway, there's a, there's a lot of things to look at here. I appreciate you coming in and meeting with our city manager, and thank you for your comments, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have good evening.
Good evening.
You too.
You're wearing the mic.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, next, next item on the agenda, mayor's appointment. Um, I moved to appoint to the First Judicial Corrections Advisory Board, Jermaine Wilson, to a term ending February 14, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering to do that. That's awesome. Okay, 5 to 0. Next item, Resolution B 2277, Annual Report for Stormwater 2020.
Uh, Mike McDonald, our Public Works Director, will handle this item.
He was here before Paul.
Technical difficulties? Do we want to come back?
Next item, CFP.
We want to come back to him?
Uh, sure, let's go back.
Let's do that. Um, next item. Is that him?
No.
Oh, there he is.
Passed you by.
I'm not sure if I was going to perhaps we asked a question, otherwise I would have put down a little less.
Mike gets to sit here, because I'm not.
Okay.
You're up.
You're up.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, or Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, this is the highlight of our stormwater bureaucracy season. We reviewed the 2020 draft report for stormwater, uh, two, uh, two weeks, a week ago, uh, two weeks ago, for what the city has accomplished in the calendar year 2020 related to stormwater. Since that time, we have made some fine tuning on the report. We have had no input from residents or staff, and as such, we are proposing or recommending that the city commission approve the stormwater report as presented.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you.
That's the short version.
No, I think we're fine. Are there any questions on this?
I, I would just like Mr. McDonald, very, very succinctly, and not, not just briefly. What are the major goals of our stormwater management program for the city?
Uh, the, uh, for years and years, the city of Leavenworth focused on water quantity, essentially flooding as a goal. Uh, the EPA and the state have essentially directed us that water quality is what our focus ought to be. We can focus on quantity also. And the structure of the report and the permit that we have, are a variety of activities that we can do that address our water quality. We require a silt fence. We promote projects like, uh, pick up the dog poop in the park with the bags. We sweep our streets. We control how much salt goes down, so we don't over, overindulge with salt. Now, probably 100 different things that we've identified, and the goal of the report is to explain those. Uh, and they, they all focus on, on water quality. Uh, the states or the feds, whether they care, it's not their concern for this report on flooding or repairs to existing stormwater systems and that sort of thing. And so, we've explained that in the, in the report. We provide some backup documentation in case we are ever audited or inspected by the state or the feds. Uh, yes, in fact, we did have news, uh, articles in our newsletters. Uh, we did discuss, uh, stormwater in public meetings, provide the public an opportunity for comment, much like we had this evening. Uh, and those, and so, let's try to summarize that all in this report to, to send on to the state. And actually, interestingly enough, I, one, uh, one man called from a town in the southern part of the state, wanted to know if he could get a copy of this, and I said, well, it's on our webpage, but what's the story? And he said, the state held us up as an example of a report that they should read before they prepare their.
That's really good to know. Awesome.
Good.
Yes.
It's a great update.
Okay. So, with that, do we have, have any other questions of Mr. McDonald? If not, do we have a motion?
I motion, I move to approve Resolution B dash 2277, Annual Report for Stormwater 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. 5 to 0. Thank you, sir. The next item, Consider Proposal for Kansas Rehabilitation Tax Credits.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to request that the commission make a motion to remove this, uh, agenda item from, uh, tonight's meeting. It will be back. Um, the city has a standard contract we use when selling state rehabilitation tax credits. We've used it on all of our sales for the last 10 years. We sent it to the purchaser, and then we were informed that, uh, very last minute, that they had changes they would like to make. Well, we need our legal staff to be able to review their proposed changes, and so, uh, we didn't feel comfortable going ahead with it tonight. So, the motion would be to remove it from the agenda item. They are still interested in purchasing the sales tax credits, um, but we need to work out the contract language.
Okay.
So, moved?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, next item on the agenda, Consider Small Cell Facility Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC DBA AT&amp;T Mobility.
Harold Williams, Center City Clerk, will handle this item.
All right. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, um, you may remember, we've talked about this a couple times. It came to a steady session. Just to talk about, um, the, um, the agreements and things that were going, uh, different agreements throughout the metropolitan area. And one of the first things that we needed to do then was to, um, put a fee structure in place. So, that was done, um, previously at the, um, January 26th meeting. Um, the commission approved that fee schedule, um, and that's been incorporated and in place. So, now, at this time, we can look at entering into these development and master right of wa- right-of-way lease agreements with various companies. And we have been approached by, um, AT&amp;T Mobility, um, to enter into one of these agreements. So, we have that before you, um, this evening. The agreement would be effective March 1st, um, 2021, and have an initial term of 10 years, which would end on February 28th, 2023. And then has some, um, renewal options in there as well. Mr. Paul Snyder from AT&amp;T is here, if you should have any questions of him. And David Waters, um, our city attorney who put the, um, agreement together, is also here, should you have any questions, um, on anything in the agreement.
Okay. Mr. Snyder, do you have anything to say tonight?
One clarification, Ms. Williamson. You said February 28th, 2023. Did you mean 2031?
Yeah, I heard that, too. Uh, 2031, yes. I don't know what I said, and 2031 is what I should have said.
10 years, not 2 years. Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Paul Snyder, representing AT&amp;T. We, we don't have any prepared statements. Uh, appreciate the commission addressing this issue. Chris Carroll, uh, extends his regrets. He recently had shoulder surgery and, and isn't traveling this far away from home, uh, so I'm here instead. But happy to answer any, any questions you have, and I know Mr. Waters is, uh, you know, prepared to, to talk about parts of the agreement. I know Mr. Kramer did a great job at your fee, uh, discussion, kind of describing what, what the intent was.
Okay. Mr. Waters, did you have some, any comments on this?
Um, I don't have anything additional, really. I'll just be kind of, I'll just be brief and just give a general overview. Um, the city is probably used to, uh, utility providers, uh, coming in, accessing the right-of-way to what you would call a franchise agreement, is, has generally been used on that. Um, due to changes in Kansas legislation, um, the term, you know, franchise is not the permitted term or the appropriate term. These types of wireless facilities, and they're, um, statutorily, they're required to be called a deployment agreement. Um, so, this is what that is. So, what this agreement does, it establishes the parameters by which, when and if, uh, AT&amp;T were to come into Leavenworth, uh, to use the right-of-way, like other utility providers do, uh, for their wireless services. This would be done pursuant to this agreement. The agreement, um, establishes a lot of the things you would normally see in a franchise agreement that you might more be used to, the payment of certain fees, um, the right to construct in the right-of-way, provided that it follows the right-of-way regulations in terms of repair, maintenance, and, uh, to the extent that they tear up anything, improving all of that, um, et cetera. But, uh, appropriate indemnity and insurance clauses, and a performance bond as well, which is very similar to franchise agreements as you have in place. So, a lot of this is very similar to what you would have with the franchise agreements that has been placed into, uh, this, we'll call it a deployment agreement, because that is a statutory term of art that is used. Uh, this agreement tonight does not actually establish the locations of any antennas or facilities. Those would still need to be presented to staff, work through staff that way, and if and when AT&amp;T comes with such, with those, those would be reviewed by staff in accordance with the code. And then a supplement would be essentially filed administratively with this agreement that would lay out the locations of those antennas. So, for example, if AT&amp;T were to come with five, uh, antennas to put in, supplement number one would come, um, would have five locations and all of that. And then, you know, if a year after that, AT&amp;T were to do others, then it would be supplement number two, and it would cover those. Uh, but this would be a master agreement that would then cover all of those, um, antennas as they are installed. So, we're setting the rules for that ahead of time, uh, so that then AT&amp;T, uh, can come and know what the rules are as they apply to the city.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Snyder or Mr. Waters on this?
No, my, my only question is that, uh, a few weeks ago, we did approve the fee schedule, right? Mr. Waters, as, as a commission, and, and, um,
Yes.
It's, it's, you know, I, and it was, what would be your description of the fee schedule? Pretty much what we would expect in terms of, you know, what we approved two or three weeks ago, as far as.
And in terms of, uh, in terms of surrounding communities, sir?
Yeah, just based on, I, I mean, they were kind of standard, you know, they kind of fall in a range of what we would expect to pay for.
Yeah, so, we have adopted the fee schedule. Um, there are some provisions of the, uh, that the FCC that have incorporated certain safe harbor fee provisions of what is deemed reasonable, uh, for cities to charge, and we are trying to stay, and we are staying within those at this point. Um, and this has been a document that I have worked with for probably coming up on close to two years now, um, with other city attorneys, um, in some of the largest metropolitan areas here in, on the Kansas side. Um, and so, this is a form that I know that has been approved in Overland Park, Lenoxville, Lee Wood, uh, Westwood, Shawnee, Miriam, uh, several others, um, and this was the work of collaborative efforts among a large group of city attorneys, uh, working with AT&amp;T on this as well, and we would expect this to be the model, uh, as other providers may come in to the city of Leavenworth as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions of Mr. Snyder or Mr. Waters? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept a small cell facility agreement with new singular wireless PCS LLC doing business as AT&amp;T Mobility.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. 5 to 0. Thank you, sir. Looking forward to it. Okay, next item on the agenda, Consider Bids for 2020 City Hall Parafet Building Repair Project.
Um, back with Mike McDonald, our Public Works Director, to handle this item.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is related to, uh, another project here on the, uh, exterior of City Hall, and it does actually impact the interior. I think Taylor has some, uh, pictures of, of what we're going to be addressing. I think Taylor has some pictures of what we're going to be addressing. And when I say parapet, it is basically, if you're not familiar with the upper part of this building, you'll see in some of these photos, there's a concrete roof slab that has kind of the roof, rubber roof, if you will, on top of it. But on top of that slab also is the, what they call terracotta, which, oh, in my haste, I left my sample up in the office. I apologize for that. But it is, terracotta is what the exterior of the building is made out of. It is a clay, it's a clay brick that are made specific sizes for the building designed by the architect back in the 20s. And the outside of the brick, or the block, if you will, has been covered with a hard stone that needs to be maintained. And we have been working on bits and pieces of this over the years, a number of projects going back from major exterior repairs to new roof, repairing some leaks in the east wall and things of that nature. This particular project addresses essentially all the part that's above the roof. That is where we've identified that when the water will get leaks from the roof, and they will show up inside as the stained ceiling tiles. Occasionally, the leak is bad enough that the ceiling tile will soak in enough water. There may be a picture here somewhere, one ceiling tile fell down on somebody's desk over a weekend here a year or so ago. If you look closely at the pictures, and some of them are hard to see, you'll see little flecks of brown in the, in the stone. That is the clay portion coming through. That needs to be properly sealed. There are some repairs that were done perhaps decades ago that need to be removed and replaced properly with everything from, looked honestly like someone mixed up a batch of sackcrete and patched a hole to probably thought it was the right stuff, but it wasn't, the sealer. So we focusing on the parapet as well as a variety of the exterior of the building to get most of that terracotta sealed up so it stops absorbing moisture, because once the moisture gets into that clay, then it just gets progressively or exponentially worse as it, as it pops out. I have Spencer Troutman from the contractor. If you have questions of him, we'll get to that point, but he's here on, on this call also. We started on this project with Strata Architects, hired them in 2018, and we worked through plans and specifications, and we were basically about ready to put this out for bid last year, and the COVID got in the way. So we waited a little longer. We found some more things to work on along the way, so the project grew a little bit. Ultimately, we've worked with several, several major firms who are pre-qualified to be stone vendors for the Riverfront Community Center project. And we sent out essentially a notice to those contractors and others that were to be pre-qualified for this project. Basically, if you were pre-qualified for the community center, you were pre-qualified for this one. And we received two qualified candidates. So we were only going to have two bidders for this, this specialty work. The work also includes repairs to the Statue of Liberty base. It is suffering from some deterioration again, and it is, there's work that will occur on all four walls of, exterior walls of this building. We also identified a whole host of other grounds-related repairs that are not part of this project. The landscaping work that was done, I think that was last year, perhaps the year before, by Parks did a really nice job. That was, that kind of came out of this effort. This building will be 100 years old in 2024, and we think it continues to be a showpiece for the community. And we want to keep it, keep it up for our citizens and taxpayers. We put out the plans for bid. We knew we would only have two bidders. Unfortunately, one of the bidders failed to complete the bid form in its entirety, left out a substantial amount of work. We did not realize that when we read the bids, and as a consequence, we have evaluated their bid as being submitted as incomplete, and it was not further considered. We do have the bid submitted by Mid-Continual Restoration for Scott, $249,521, which we believe to be, it's fairly close, I think, within a few thousand dollars of the engineer's estimate, which was based on the work that we had done primarily at the community center and some other projects. Brief conversations with Spencer, or they are ready to go to work. The project has a timeframe. They can't start any later than April 1st of this year, and it has to be completed no later than November 1st. He said they expect to start essentially April 1st, if not sooner, and they are planning on three and a half months of work. Their, the vast majority of the work will not be done with, like the scaffold you see around buildings for months at a time. It'll be from systems that overhang from the roof. If they're working perhaps on the, in the front doorway where they're on concrete all around, you may see some ladders or scaffolding, but it's not their plan to have a large scaffolding system surrounding the building during this project.
Good. Good to hear. Yeah, is it from the pictures that we received today? Looks like there's stuff going on all over the building, so.
Yeah, so it's a little bit here and a little bit there, and I've kind of been looking at it on and off for 30 something years, and I'm really glad we're getting, you know, we're motivated, we have the resources to take care of that, and we'll set this building on the, on a good course well into the future.
Mr. Troutman, did you have anything to add? There you go.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
Did you have anything to say to add to this, this evening?
No, I think Mike explained everything pretty well. We're excited to get started and, you know, ready to make the building look pretty good again.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Troutman or Mr. McDonald? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I just like to comment that as far as the bid, I mean, it varied, it's a little higher, but not very much in, in terms of corresponding to the estimate that the engineer made, which I, which I just point that out as a, as something that's good. I mean, there was some difference in some of the individual line items, but overall, very much in line with what the engineer's estimate was for this project, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, sir. All right. Do we have a motion then?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept a bid, City Hall Parapet Building Repair Project awarded to.
Mid-Continent.
Mid-Continent, I'm trying, I just lost the page here. Mid-Continent Restoration of Fort Scott, Kansas, in the amount of $249,521.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Troutman, thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, the consent agenda.
I move to approve the claims for February 6, 2021, through February 19, 2021, in the amount of $924,607.50. That amount for payroll number three, effective February 12, 2021, in the amount of $314,943.96. No police and firemen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please begin, begin voting. Commissioner Griswold.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, sir.
Keep making me laugh, Mayor.
Try not to. Okay. That ends everything on our agenda. We'll just go around the room here. Mr. Kramer.
The only thing I had is staff informs me that we are in full recruiting mode for the Three Mile Creek cleanup program, as well as some other identified areas in the city. We haven't quite got the groups out of their winter slumber yet. We only have two so far, so we continue to reach out to the ones who participated last year. So if anybody knows of any organizations looking to have a donation toward their cause and really ready to roll up their sleeves and clean up Three Mile Creek, reach out to anywhere in the city, and we'll head you in the right direction.
$500, is that correct?
Yes, for a job well done.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Griswold.
I just like to write, and some of, some of the commissioners may say the same thing, I'd just like to recognize in the sad news of Mr.
Graber.
Graber's passing, who's been an extraordinary civil servant, civil leader, civic leader for the community of Leavenworth, the county, and of course, he was a state representative. So just passing along my condolences to his wife and just indicating that this is a big loss and.
It definitely is. Definitely is.
So, and then the other thing is, just, just yesterday, we passed, the nation passed a half a million people who have passed away because of COVID-19, and I would just say, myself and just all of us in Leavenworth, think about them and remember them. And many, many of them, 2,000 to 3,000 in terms of the Americans, have been people who have been part of the medical profession, so I especially think about them during this time and hopefully, I think we're going in the right direction as far as the whole metrics and everything with respect to COVID-19, but we need to continue that progress and continue to do the things that'll, you know, crush the virus, so to speak. So those are my two points.
Thank you, sir.
I think I have, kudos to the Leavenworth County Health Department. Heard from many people that have received the vaccinations at the community center, how well it's run, how efficient it's, how efficient it is, and I think they do it every Wednesday, am I correct? And they usually give out 1,000 to 1,300 injections, and it's, it's run very, very well, and people appreciate it.
I agree.
That's all I got. Thank you.
I should reenlarge.
I don't have anything at this time. I might have a comment in a minute, but I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Yes, sir, it's you.
Okay. So I want to give a special shout out to the newest restaurant in our community, Crab Wings. If you like seafood, soul food.
Oh, my gosh.
I highly recommend that you go down and support this new restaurant. They are located at 507 Shawnee Street, Leavenworth, Kansas.
Have you eaten there yet?
So I stopped by. I haven't ate there.
Yeah, I know. I've, I've seen it. I have got to go in there.
It's on my birthday, this Saturday.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
If you want to give me anything.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a couple of things here. Figured I'd end, end it on a note here, but one, one thing, Attorney General, Kansas Attorney General Derek Schmidt is sponsoring a Protect Yourself From Identity Theft, a Free Personal Document Destruction on Friday, March 5, 2021, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Haymarket Square. And bring your stuff to have it, anything you, you need to have shredded, bring it, bring it to there, and limit three bags or boxes per person.
I believe that you can take like a hard disk off a computer, something that, I mean, chops up metal too, does it not?
I don't know about that.
I don't know if they're doing that at this particular thing. It just talks about three bags or boxes per person. So I don't know that they are doing, we can check out their website or contact them and see if there's anything.
I looked at it online. I think this just paid for.
I think it's just paid for this time.
Yeah. So, okay, and the other thing I have is, I was concerned about comments made by our county commissioner, who represents Leavenworth, by the way, Jeff Culberson. He made a, a, gave a presentation on the Eastern Gateway proposal that he's, he's really been pushing for. And what he said, what he said at the meeting was very negative toward Leavenworth. He said that, he stated that the city had concerns about this Eastern Gateway project that, that, that we had two concerns. One, that we would lose a Centennial Bridge, and another would be that Lansing would probably outgrow Leavenworth, or even Baser will outgrow Leavenworth because of the position of the new bridge. This is, this is, I mean, we are looking at, our county as a whole, and we have been for many years, ways to improve transportation. It's difficult to go through Seven Highway and go through all the stoplights to get to Kansas City if we want to bring business here. We support that. We support growing Leavenworth County as, excuse me, my voice cracks because I, of this hard thing, but we supported a countywide transportation study to study all of our transportation issues that get our companies between here and Kansas City, our employees between here and Kansas City in the easiest way possible. We supported our Centennial Bridge, and fortunately, we have that in the works for our 10-year KDOT plan, so we're very thankful for that. However, to say that the city of Leavenworth has reservations on this project related to concerns about growth in other cities is incorrect, and that sows the seeds of division and animosity, and I'm here to say that we, we do not feel that way. I don't know where he got that idea, but we do not feel that way.
Well, as a commissioner, I've never said that, have I? That's a patently false statement, is it not?
That is a false statement.
Yeah, patently false.
I don't know of any, any of us that have ever said that. Or our city manager.
Well, we can talk with Commissioner Culberson and try to get some clarification there, because that is a patently false statement.
It is, and I am, I reached out to the county commissioner and chairman, Mike Smith, and spoke with him, and we had a really nice conversation, and I just expressed my sentiments as well. I did try to call county commissioner Culberson, but did not hear back from him. So.
Well, he is our commissioner.
But yeah, but the chairman is.
As well as commissioner cause, so, you know.
Yes, but, yeah.
And I, he should be representing us as well.
And I know we're all in support of, you know, city Leavenworth, but all the cities in the county as a whole, and you know, it's, it's called teamwork, and we've, we've always been supportive of it.
Well, just wanted to bring that up, and I know that.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Kramer is writing a letter to this effect that he wrote today, and it went to Commissioner Culberson and Chairman Smith of Lansing, so, oh, and Chairman, Chairman.
County Commissioner, yeah.
County Commissioner, yes. Anyway, so any.
Now, that was, no, that was my little thing I wanted to add, that I spoke to him today, so that's, that's all I had.
He went right into it. All right. If nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I vote aye. Meeting is adjourned.